Start the recording. I'll say it again, welcome everybody to the Fitchburg Planning Board for the CDBG Public Hearings this Thursday, January 12th. Some opening remarks. Good evening. The purpose of tonight's public hearing is to gather comments from year 49, Community Development Block Grant applicants who want to speak about their existing programs or changes to their programs, first-time applicants who want to speak about their proposal, and the general public who wish to identify community needs. This year, 34 proposals were received by the Planning Board totaling approximately $1.9 million in requests. It is estimated that approximately $950,000 in year 49 funds will be available. The schedule. The Planning Board will meet on January 24th to discuss the year 49 proposals. We will then submit our recommendations for funding to Mayor Dina Tally. The mayor will review our funding recommendations and submit his recommendations to the City Council. The City Council will review the recommendations beginning on February 21st. The City Council's Finance Committee will make their recommendations on February 22nd. And the full City Council will vote on March 7th. The proposed consolidated plan and statement of CDBG activities will be published on March 22nd. Public comments will be received up to the date of the second public hearing which is scheduled for April 25th. We anticipate local approval of year 49 consolidated plan and CDBG action plan in May, at which time the city's year 49 application will be submitted to HUD for approval. The program year officially begins on July 1st, 2023. Liz Murphy, Executive Director of the Community Development and Park Department, will now say a few words about the CDBG regulations.
Thanks Paula. This is exciting stuff. You're all on the edge of your seats. In addition to the summary of the year 49's proposals, the handouts include a list of eligible activities and national objectives. Eligible activities cover a wide range of services. Public facility improvements, public services which are capped at 15% of the total entitlement amount, demolition, economic development, rehab and preservation, and planning and administration which is capped at 20% of the total. Besides meeting the eligibility criteria, the proposed activity must address one of three national objectives. An activity must either A) benefit persons of lower moderate income, or B) aid in the prevention or elimination of slums or blight, or C) meet other community development needs which have a particular urgency because of existing conditions, or pose a serious and immediate threat to the health or welfare of the community where other financial resources are not available to meet such needs. So, for instance, a pandemic might be an urgent need. As an entitlement city, which is a criteria based on age of housing, growth lag, and poverty rate under the CDBG program, it's our responsibility to ensure and to document that at least 70% of the block grant funds are used to benefit low and moderate income persons over a three-year period. Low to moderate income is defined as earning 80% or less of the area median income and/or an activity is located in a census tract where at least 51% of the beneficiaries are of low moderate income, and all of the residents within the given area will benefit from the activity. Records regarding income limits, as well as local policies and procedures of the CDBG program are available at the Community Development Department Monday through Friday. As Paula Karen stated, we welcome comments on specific proposals as well as overall housing and community development needs within Fitchburg and all other HUD-funded initiatives such as our home program, which funds housing activities throughout the city. Forms are available tonight in English and Spanish if anyone would like to fill out a public comment form or notice of intent. This information is included in the consolidated plan as well as CDBG projects and helps guide and inform our planning efforts moving forward. If you'd like to obtain copies of these forms or have a particular question about the program, please see myself regarding the housing and development and Kimberly LeBlanc, our CDBG coordinator. I'd like to give a special thank you to Herlyn Jamie, Administrative Assistant with the city's Community Development and Planning Department, who will provide Spanish interpretation services. Please let us know if anyone needs assistance. Si necesita servicios de interpretacion es en español, por favor habla con Herlyn.
Great job Liz.
Thank you. I will now turn the meeting back over to Paula.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to open the meeting up for public comments. If anyone did not receive a summary of the year 49 proposals, the summary is available in the handout section. Please limit your comments to under five minutes so everyone has a chance to speak. Please mute your microphone when you are not presenting or asking questions. Thank you. That's for people who are also virtual. And I'm going to go through section by section we have on the summary, so if you want to follow along with that, I'm going to post it up on the screen for those at home and abroad. Through that. There we go. Actually, I didn't share my screen, did I?
I think, is the first one yours, City Parks, or James?
I think the first one is City Parks, Parks and Rec.
Yeah, I'll do that. Mike, could you monitor if anybody's virtual would like to do comment because I can't see both at the same time. I probably can, but I'm not trained to do so at this point. So our first item is City Parks signs replacement and updating in the year requested amount of $12,000.
Yes. I thought I was waiting like, "And go."
I could read the summary, it is right up on the screen.
So, I'm new to Fitchburg and the Parks and Recreation Department. This is month number three. And in my ventures throughout the city, in our over 40 parks and playgrounds, I noticed that several parks are either lacking signage, the signage has been damaged or vandalized, completely washed out or faded, and those are kind of an important necessity to have in parks, just to make people aware of when the parks open and close, what they are and are not allowed to do. And I just made a request to hopefully update and make a consistent message across the city and throughout the city, providing accurate information and places to get that information not only at the park, but with QR codes to link it to the department's website where they can further get information and additionally provide a dedicated phone number on the majority of those signs where if somebody sees something or notices maybe, like for instance, like broken glass or something inappropriate, they'll have a number to call where they can leave a message and we can attend to it sooner rather than later. Where people sometimes see something and notice something and then they don't have a means at that moment, and by the time they get home, they might forget, or you know, slips out of their mind, which those things happen, but giving them an opportunity to have that where they can act right away hopefully will limit those things from occurring.
Great.
So, thank you very much, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you, sounds good. Is it, also here for the second one, Parks and Playground by Community Development in the requested amount of $75,000. Project will include the completion of the upgrades to, I can't think, Mama Fitz and Park Hill Park and provides necessary park designs and match leverage grant funding to update outdated park features and meet city open space and recreation plan to upgrade old equipment and reuse existing parks to meet current recreational needs of the community.
Yes, so we are looking to, we're seeking funding $75,000 to finish working on Mama Fitz Park and Park Hill Park, replacing playground equipment, and then working with our consultant and the Parks Department and referring to our open space plan, we'll be looking to plan for the next park improvement activity. So some of this funding would be used for planning as well as some contingency funds for the Mama Fitz and Park Hill Park. So, and potentially match funding for the next grant that we would be seeking, such as a park grant. We often use CDBG as a match for other grants that are required to see that match. So, that's what this application is seeking.
Thank you. Does anybody have any comments or questions regarding that proposal? The next proposal is North Street Sidewalk.
I'm going to speak on that.
What's that?
I'm sorry.
Of $176,000, installation of concrete sidewalks along the eastly side of North Street between McKay Ave and Lincoln Street. This project would include excavation, gravel, loam, seating, landscaping, and granite curbing. There is presently no sidewalk on either side of the street. This would present safe access to local students and pedestrians walking between the campuses and the school parking lots at the Civic Center.
Thanks. Andy couldn't be here today, speaking for him. This is the other side of North Street. We think of North Street sometimes as the connection from Main Street to Fitchburg State University, but it actually continues on all the way down to John Fitch Highway, past the McKay School, past the university, past the McKay School. Between the McKay School and John Fitch Highway, there are no sidewalks on either side, and this is a major route for pedestrian students to walk to McKay. So we're looking to create sidewalks, safe sidewalks, for students to go to school. And we're seeking $176,000.
All right. Are there any comments or questions regarding this? This project's come up in the past as well, but I mean noticeable because of exactly the students that went to the Civic Center.
So, we're trying to prioritize it now.
Yep. All about sidewalks.
Just like to speak in support of this project. So as DPW Commissioner, this has been on our radar as well, so having funds through CDBG to help us get this project done would be extremely helpful.
Great, thank you. And probably here for the next one, Twin City Rail Trail Connector, sponsored by the Department of Public Works in the amount of $95,000. The project will pay for consultant fees to help improve existing sidewalks along Railroad Street and provide an ADA compliant bike and pedestrian-friendly, well-marked route from the northern terminus of Phase 1 of the Twin Cities Rail Trail Project to the southern terminus of Phase 2 of the Twin Cities Rail Trail Project.
So, as you know, Phase 1 of the Twin City Rail Trail Project has been completed, and it dumps out onto, what is that, Middle Street right there? Or Third Street?
Middle Street.
Middle Street. And DOT is planning to construct Phase 2 of the rail trail at some point, and that'll start right at the intersection of First and Railroad roughly, cross over the railroad tracks, the river, and land at the MBTA station, the train station on the other side of the tracks and the river. But what MassDOT is not able to complete is kind of the connector between the end of Phase 2, or the end of Phase 1 and the start of Phase 2. And a lot of that has to do with the engineering directives that MassDOT has to follow with regards to minimum width for bike paths, sidewalks, travel lanes, et cetera. So, they've asked us to kind of, to work through a way for us as a city to fund and implement that piece of the project so that we don't necessarily have to comply with those engineering directives, which would otherwise make this portion of the connection between the two phases roughly infeasible. So, the goal here would be to hire a consultant to work with Community Development and DPW to design a connector between the end of Phase 1 and the start of Phase 2, improve ADA accessibility along the route there, and add signage and marking to make it clear that that's the path people are supposed to take to get from one phase to the next.
That sounds great. It's been well-received so far, the rail trail, so completing the next part would be great.
Yeah, I think it's a fantastic addition to the city. It provides an option for residents to get out there, use the path, do some recreation. And it also provides a footpath connection between Lemonster and Fitchburg, which is fantastic. If someone wants to take the train, they could walk to the train if they really wanted to, or they could bike to the train, and it would be along a relatively safe route instead of trying to navigate the city streets and sidewalks, which, as we all know, aren't in the best shape.
And great inf, parking area to actually start.
Right. Yep.
Thank you.
I've witnessed a few people commuting to work, because I know a local attorney who has an office right here, you see him on the rail trail, but going both ways.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next activity is Outdoor Fitness Court and Outdoor Fitness Studio sponsored by Fitchburg Parks and Recreation Department in the amount of $65,000. The proposed scope of the project consists of the installation of a National Fitness Campaign fitness court and fitness studio to provide all members of the community access to premier outdoor fitness spaces, to exercise, play, and do other activities to improve quality of life. Good evening, nice to see you again.
I'm back. Thank you again. So this one is, this is recent. So, I actually met with the National Fitness Campaign group yesterday again. This is something that is, in the title itself, it's the National Fitness Campaign. They want to have 10,000 courts across the country, and they're working towards their goal of doing that. In Massachusetts, there are a handful out in Western Mass, a decent amount along the north and south shore, but only one in Central Mass. That's in Gardner, and it just opened up this past fall. Gardner only has the front part, which is the fitness part of the court. This is an outdoor court, it's actually geared towards all ages. They have a QR code that you can scan or hop on the department's website, and there is fitness activities for all ages. So you could be eight to, I want to say 85, but up the age ladder. And it provides basically a quick circuit training that you go through and exercise. On the opposite side of that, we would be one of the first in Massachusetts to have the fitness studio part. That is an area where you can do stretching, outdoor yoga, and a lot of other activities not related to, you know, the jumping on the plyo boxes, the pulling of the bars and things like that. The proposed location for this is at Coolidge Park, an untouched gem in the city of Fitchburg. And the reason for that location, we have soccer practice, deck hockey, softball, students from the college, people right across the condominiums and townhouses, and that people go there to the dog park and walk around, and also use the playground. So for someone that is dropping their child off at soccer practice or attending a game, they can take 10 minutes of their time and complete a circuit training and get some free exercise while they're doing it. I discussed this with the Parks Commission at my meeting on Tuesday night. There used to be something similar throughout one of the trails, I believe, at Cogswalt, and people, it's not really there anymore, so people have been asking for something like this, and putting it in a park that there's a great vision for. This would just be the start. So, that's about it. So thank you again.
Does anybody have any questions? Any other comment?
Comment? Just that, I believe I've seen one of these circuit training equipment programs in Holyoke. I don't know if they mentioned that was, and I believe it was actually CDBG funded, and it looked great.
Is it actually designating space, or is there actually any equipment available, or is it just, here's a space to download an app?
So, Coolidge, there's a lot of open space and a lot of unused space, so working with the DPW Commissioner, we're picking out a site where we are, we'll have plenty of room. It's basically the equivalent of the size of like a tennis court, is what's going to be put in, or what hopefully will be put in, where one half is like the stationary stations, where you can go do your circuit training, and then the flip side is that studio piece, and then in the middle, there's a wall, I wish I had, but I have pictures here that I can give you. There's like a wall, it's like a, kind of like a curved wall, and there's designated art that they provide, but if there's even more additional funds, you can actually get a local artist to do a mural on the backside of it. So there are other options to expand the project if we wanted to.
All right. Thank you for the explanation.
You're welcome.
Paula, could I just remind folks, as I'm monitoring the 12 attendees who are virtual, if folks want to comment on things, just raise your hand and use that function, and I'll see it.
I appreciate that, thanks for saying that.
Turn their mic on.
The next application is Abolitionist Park, sponsored by the Fitchburg Department of Public Works in the amount of $100,000. The proposed scope of work consists of replacing the current sidewalk, the intersections of Snow Street and Union Street, and Snow Street and Cherry Street with ADA compliant concrete sidewalk and wheelchair ramps, additionally providing additional street parking on the east side of Snow Street, along with the redesign of the concrete sidewalk to eliminate the current driveway entrance on the park side of Snow Street. A lot of work.
Yes. So this, this is an application submitted by the Department of Public Works, but we've worked closely with the Friends of Abolitionist Park and the Fitchburg Police Department to come up with this plan. So currently, there's no parking allowed in that block between Cherry Street and Union Street, or, yeah, Cherry and Union Streets. So, the plan would be to modify the city ordinance to allow parking on the east side and create a paved apron on that side, and then also modify the sidewalk on the other side of the street, on the park side of the street, to close off two curb cuts that used to be driveway entrances for that parcel prior to it being turned into a park, and then also improve the sidewalk along that frontage of the park, and the ADA accessibility for the intersections on either side of that block. Right now, the sidewalks are in really rough shape. The wheelchair ramps are not ADA compliant, they don't have detectable warning panels, they're at the wrong slopes and all that stuff. So, we'd be looking to fix all that, make it ADA compliant, add crosswalks at both of those intersections, and improve the sidewalk along that frontage of the park. I think there's a lot of events there throughout the year, so allow a place for people to park. We'd also add handicap parking in that area so that disabled folks could use the park as well.
All right, thank you.
Paula, David Debo Munias has his hand up, and Dave, you're unmuted.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for hearing us tonight on these proposals. Thank you DPW for submitting. We, as you may or may not know, Fitchburg Abolitionist Park, we've had several events. The first, the groundbreaking, had over 100 people, and then we had another one December last year that had about 75. 300 people came to this year's ribbon cutting on Juneteenth, and then another 100 or so came to an event in October. This would be, in terms of accessibility, obviously, the curbs at the corners of Union and Snow and Cherry and Snow obviously need to be repaired because of their, I can't confirm that they're out of compliance, but they're in pretty rough shape. But adding a wheelchair accessible ramp in front of our entrance to the park would be all the more, make the park all the more accessible for folks. Most of the folks that utilize the park as of now, part of the goal, the park was not just about, you know, celebrating this important history, but it was also about creating a green space in a neighborhood where a lot of folks don't have that. And most of the folks who are utilizing the park as of now are from Hotel Raymond and 50 Day Street, who are by and large elderly and disabled. So, you know, these improvements, obvious, you know, for those purposes, on one hand, and also improving the aesthetic of the neighborhood and the look, to be more welcoming to any visitor. So, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any questions?
Any further questions? Anybody has?
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. The next proposal is Low Park Design Plan. Sponsored by the Fitchburg Parks and Recreation Department in the amount of $75,000, proposed scope of project consists of obtaining a design plan to ensure proper funding is acquired when it comes to improving Low Park in conjunction with the New View redevelopment of the school building and surrounding area. Park creates an improved green space for local community, neighborhood families, children, and senior citizens.
I might ask for help on this one. So, this is, now again, please keep in mind that I'm only three months here. So there is artist lofts going in the old BF Brown.
BF Brown, Fitchburg Arts Community.
And this is part, so coinciding with that, there's going to be, I believe, a rejuvenation of Low Park. And this proposal is to get the funding for the plan to do that, so when the lofts, the next step is ready to go, they have an idea of what costs and what's going to happen with Low Park. Did that come out right?
Yeah, absolutely.
I apologize.
It's okay. So it's the design before the implementation? So it's the design phase, so when funding's available, you're good to go?
Correct.
Got it. Anybody have any questions on? Is there anybody in the virtual world?
Nope, don't see any hands.
No? Okay.
Oh, sorry. Mark Dawn from New View Communities, and we think this is a great idea. We've been planning this for a really, really long time. There are some funds connected, excuse me, didn't even realize my jacket wasn't right here. There's some funds connected with the park as well, with the development as well through Chapter 40R that have been allocated to the city, and as, you know, part of the redevelopment of the BF Brown, we're actually taking a small portion, there's an easement from the small portion, we'll be putting in new parking spaces for the park. So, the timing of this is really important, that it go forward at this time so that it connects. Otherwise, we'll be finishing one project and not doing the other project. There'll be a lot of time, I think there'll be a lot of potential cost savings and also coordination to do it all at the same time. So getting the planning in now, where we can have a good community process, make sure we're designing a park that will really work for the future, would be really important. So I appreciate the Parks Department, DPW, and the Planning Department all putting this in, and Ward Counselor as well.
Great.
Thanks.
Paula, Anne, has her hand raised? You're unmuted, Anne.
Oh, fantastic, go ahead. Good evening.
Anne, you there?
Anne?
Oh, can you hear me now?
There we go. Little bit louder, Anne.
Can you hear me?
Oh, much better.
That's much better.
Great. I also don't want to blast everyone out of their seats. I just wanted to comment that this year, when I came to the CDBG hearing, originally in November/December, I had talked about Low Park and the Sundial Community Gardens being in Low Park, and just want to make sure that as plans are being made, that maybe that's taken into consideration of the design. I was going to submit a proposal around the community gardens, but really to do it, I really would like to engage the members of the community in order to make sure that the design really reflects their needs and also then ties into everything else that's going on. So, just wanted to put that out there and see if we can make sure that Sundial Community Garden is integrated into this project.
Sounds good, only community, public environment.
So, the short answer to that is yes. The longer and more in-depth answer is, you please, I wish there was, please reach out to me, so that we can discuss that further. That was actually a topic that was brought up at the Parks Commission meeting, not only the Sundial Community Garden, but the other community gardens throughout the city, so everybody can be on the same page, and we can make them the best that they can be so that the community as a whole can benefit from those gardens.
I couldn't agree more, and I will do that, thank you.
No, thank you.
Thank you. Great comment. The next proposal is Abolitionist Park Phase 3B, sponsored by the Friends of the Fitchburg Abolitionist Park in the amount of $5,000. If funded again, CDBG funds would help the FFAP complete the final phase of the park's development, Phase 3B, which includes the development of an interactive display board where images of abolitionists come to life to tell their stories and how they were connected to Fitchburg. Is David there? I think it's.
Yes, I'm here. Am I unmuted? So, yeah.
So, yeah, so David, thank you again to the members of the Planning Board and the Community Development Department. We are, you know, we entered Phase 3 last year. Part of Phase 3 included the mural, which was completed in the fall, and the final piece of the park, which has been part of our planning since the beginning, but is probably the most, one of the most expensive parts, is the development of augmented reality. The way that the design is, is there's gonna be a long, interactive panel, which is what CDBG funds would fund, if funded, and that would have images of abolitionists, homes that were on the Underground Railroad, and other kind of symbolic pieces that are important to Fitchburg's history in relation to the abolitionist movement and the Underground Railroad. And people who would come into the park could hover their phone, once the augmented reality is developed, over these images, and learn about that history, including national figures who were connected to Fitchburg, like Frederick Douglass and Lucy Stone, and the Grimkey Sisters, William Lloyd Garrison, and so on. So it would be wonderful if we could get those funds. And we have some other irons in the fire for additional funds, and we have some funds in the bank now to help fund that. But in all, we have to raise $30,000, and this would just cover the physical board.
So this is a portion of the $30,000 to complete the project?
It would be the portion to cover the board. So I think what we're planning to do is, we're gathering the images and the transcripts, right, the text that's gonna go into these, into the augmented reality now. And what we do is probably install, right, if we have the funds, install the board. And then, and we've already started the process of pulling together the content. So this is for the actual physical piece that's gonna be in the park.
Okay. So, very innovative. Thank you very much. Does anybody have any comment or question on the application?
Don't see any here, Paula.
Okay.
Oops, and now we gotta get back to-
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next proposal is Crockerfield Broad Street Entry, sponsored by the City of Fitchburg School Department in the amount of $7,000. Funds for the project will restore the pavement at the Broad Street Entry by removing the existing asphalt overlay and the original concrete pavement underneath. They will be replaced with concrete pavement to restore the original appearance.
And I think Ms. Delaxo is in attendance for this, virtually?
Your guests can hear me okay?
Oh, yes.
Anne.
Good evening.
Hi, yeah, I'm running from the Crockerfield Restoration Committee. We're a nonprofit organization that assists the school department by identifying needs and raising funds to restore Crockerfield. Crockerfield was donated to the children of school, of the school department in Fitchburg back in 1918 by Alva Crocker, and was designed by the Olmsted Brothers. It is on the National Register of Historic Places. Time and weather have taken its toll, and Crockerfield has needed a lot of restoration work. And we need to do this work, or else this historic facility that has served generations of schoolchildren will be lost. Over the past 25 years or so, we've done over $2 million worth of restoration work, some of which have received CDBG funding, so we thank you for that. Crockerfield has two main entrances, one at Broad Street, the other at Circle Street. About 15 years ago, we restored the ornamental gate structures and the cast iron gates. And then a few years ago, we restored the walkway at Circle Street. So for this project, we propose to restore the walkway at Broad Street. Now, the Broad Street walkway was originally concrete, but when it started to fall apart at some time in the past, what they did was just overlay it with asphalt. Now the asphalt's cracking in many areas, so it's becoming quite an eyesore. So we propose to remove the asphalt, as well as the underlying concrete, and replace it with new concrete to return it to the original appearance and the original material, which is what the historic restoration guidelines dictate. So we estimate the cost is about $14,000, and we'd split it 50/50 between the school department and community development block grants. So our request is for $7,000.
Okay. That's the question I was going to ask, and you answered it. Does anybody else have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
The next proposal, sponsored by the Honor Guards, is Mulch for Military, in the amount of $15,000. The focus of the project is to beautify and maintain military gravesite markers and install military guards to prevent markers from sinking. Part of this also involves thoroughly cleaning the markers, some granite, some bronze. Funds will be used to produce each guard installed approximately 340.
Hi. Hi. I want those guys that spoke before me to speak on my behalf, because they're way better at public speaking than I am, but don't hold that against me. So Mulch for Military was formed in the fall of 2021. We became a 501(c)(3) in May of '22. Our mission, as kind of the statement said, we install Honor Guards around veteran markers throughout. So far, I've done nine different cemeteries in central Mass. We did about 200 total cemeteries, or plots, I should say, last year, in 2022. The cost of the guards is roughly $44, $45 a piece to make. I did drop off pictures, which really gives you a good idea of what we do. The before and after pictures kind of tell the story. So basically, it looks like a tub that you would put, you wash your baby in, and the granite stone or the bronze stone sits inside of that. So it provides a border around either the bronze marker or the granite marker. These, last year, I did visit Forest Green, St. Joe's, and St. Bernard's. I worked with the VSOs, Fitchburg, obviously it's Michelle Marino, Lomester, it's Rick Votor. They provided me with a list of veterans in all the cemeteries. And then, through the VSOs letting it known what our organization does, multiple families reached out to us to ask us to install guards. Many of these guards are in a state of, I don't even know, bad condition. I mean, some of these, you walk by, and if you've walked through a cemetery, you've seen them, where there's, you see a pile of leaves. Now I know that when I see that, it's a veteran marker that's under there, and it really is a shame. We did concentrate mostly on WWII and Vietnam vets, knowing that those family members are probably no longer here. As we all know, cemetery staffs aren't what they used to be. When I was an altar boy way back when, there was four cemetery workers at St. Cecilia's, which is my parish in Lomester. Now there's one. So they just don't have the manpower to take care of those stones. And I think everybody would agree, those veterans deserve our, you know, honor and, you know, our devotion. So if you've walked in any cemetery in this area, you would see my guards that have been installed. Like I said, we did 200. I did roughly, I think, 35 in Forest Green, probably six or seven in St. Bernard's, and then just a couple in St. Joe's. I do get permission from the maintenance staff. I show them what the product is, and I take full responsibility. If there's any maintenance that needs to be done after the fact, my goal was not to make more work for any of the cemetery workers, it's to supplement what they already do. They can run the lawn mowers right over them. They're made of PVC, so they're weather resistant. So in years to come, I can paint them, you can weed whack right up to them, and like I said, you can run a mower right over them. So Fitchburg, obviously, all three cemeteries fall in that zone. So I think that's it. Any questions? Or, I guess that's your cue, right? Any questions?
Any questions. Thank you for your proposal.
Okay. Thank you.
And are there any questions?
I'm not seeing any hands.
Okay. Thank you.
Just wanted to speak in support of that proposal. So our cemetery superintendent is out on vacation this week. Her daughter just had a baby, and she's helping take care of her. But we have our Board of Cemetery Trustees meeting next Thursday, so I plan to just get their approval for this proposal, just to make sure everything's good with all the stakeholders involved.
Great. Appreciate that.
And Kim, I'm sorry for not replying to your email about that. Sorry.
The next proposal, Safety in Building Updates, Coolidge Pool House, sponsored by the Fitchburg Parks and Recreation Department in the amount of $23,500. Funds used to update and improve the pool house at Coolidge so it can operate safely and effectively for the community, installation of an eyewash station for the employees and pool guests in case of a chemical incident, improve the interior/exterior lighting so staff and guests have safe access to the facility, addition of safety/security lighting and security system to protect and keep the facility safe and secure, and lastly, anti-slip coating added to the flooring on and around the pool house to reduce the possibility of people slipping and becoming injured. Welcome back.
Hey.
It's like you never left.
This is the last one, though, so, thank you again. So as I had mentioned in my first proposal, touring the city and trying to figure out throughout the parks of what is needed and how to approach and tackle a variety of different things. One of the main things, even in my previous career, has always been the safety and well-being of the people that I'm responsible for. And having a pool, that's a big thing, whether it's at your house or, in my case, in an entire community. I want to make sure not only the people that are swimming in the pool, but the people that are taking care of the pool are safe and have everything they need in order for that pool to operate in the most effective and efficient and, most important, safe manner, so that people can enjoy it to the full capability that the pool has. There are, I actually, yesterday, we had a consultant come out to look over the pool and the pool house area. We will be getting a detailed report for the larger scheme of things, but in the meantime, requesting a much more of a smaller scale size of funding to hopefully address some of these things. So I appreciate it. Again.
Thank you.
Am I good?
I think for the pool house, any questions on this one? Hopefully, on your future agenda, there'll be something about restrooms at Coolidge Park for all those walkers.
As I said in the first one, there is, there is, there is, there's a very big vision that I have for that-
Excellent.
-park. So, in due time. Thank you guys very much. I appreciate it.
This is your category. Yes, thank you.
Paula?
Yes?
Not related to any of the applicants themselves, but if we can have people speak up and say their names when they come to the podium, for those who are virtual, who can't, who don't know who's speaking.
So I'll put that out there. When you come to the podium, and I usually say this too, for everyone in public hearings, please state your name for the record.
Someone come back up?
Oh, we know you now.
Got you the first time. We have a Commercial Kitchen Capital Reinvestment Project, sponsored by YMCA of Central Massachusetts in the amount of $75,000. The proposed scope of work in the existing 576-foot kitchen will replace all major kitchen equipment and most support features. The scope will remove and dispose of equipment that exceeded its life expectancy with replacement of the range and hood, dishwasher, refrigerators, freezer, to achieve a fully functional kitchen that meets codes and design standards. Upgraded electrical power and lighting, cabinet work, and refurbished finishes will be included. Is anybody here this evening?
Yes, I, sorry, I just unmuted. Ah, there's another hand.
Hello?
Hello.
Ah, good. You are unmuted. Hi.
Good evening.
Sorry, say your name again.
Sure. My name is Lisa Welcome. I am the Executive Director of the YMCA of Central Massachusetts for North County. And we are submitting this proposal on behalf of the Monmouth City Community Branch that is located in Fitchburg, and it is to provide much-needed repairs and updates to our community kitchen. We use it to prepare meals and snacks for over 400 individuals monthly, including children and teens enrolled in our income-based preschool and out-of-school childcare programs, as well as homeless individuals in Fitchburg that we provide meals for through our partnership with the North Central Mass Faith-Based Community Coalition. And due to the high cost of repairing and replacing our current industrial stove, we have not been able to prepare and serve hot meals as we have in the past. We've only been able to prepare sandwiches and cold meals. Receiving this funding would allow us to move forward immediately with the work on the proposed project and assist in our expansion plans for our kitchen to be available for additional community use. Thank you. Any questions?
Any questions. This is the facility on Wallace?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Is any, any questions?
Not seeing any, Paula.
All right. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
The last proposal in this category is Parking Lot Revitalization, sponsored by the Rollstone Congregational Church in the amount of $15,600. The church seeks to funding to renovate a small piece of their land to be used as a parking lot. The entire funding request would pay to remove existing asphalt, rocks, debris, replace it with base, join the abutting asphalt, install new asphalt. Building would be used for community-based activities, including as a polling site, commercial space for Finicky Fork, small business office space, boy and girl scout troop meeting space, community concerts. Hands of Hope would also share the facilities in feeding and helping the homeless. Is there anyone here this evening? Good evening. Please state your name for the record.
My name is Eileen Berger. I represent the Rollstone Congregational Church. I'm here to talk about a decaying piece of land that we own that abuts our parking lot. It has had an interesting history, to say the least. It was a parking lot for a small business, and I think, as I understand it, went bankrupt, and the city then owned it and tried to sell the property, and was unsuccessful, and, looking at the property, I'm not at all surprised. And so they gave it to us. It's registered in our name. It's on Snow and Cherry Street. And I'm so pleased to hear that other people in town are looking at Snow and Cherry Street too, in that area, for revitalization. We have, we have a 150-year-old church. It's a huge building. Only a small part of it is a sacristy. And we're trying to, we're doing very well in kind of leasing out and our, the rest of the rooms and possibilities in our building. We have, at present, we are the kitchen for Finicky Forks. It's down in our basement, where we, due to a flood some years ago, we have an entirely modern kitchen. We have the Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts living there. We are the polling place for Ward 5. We have a small business there, and we have opportunities for other small businesses there as well. It's, we're at a very, I think, crowded place, an interesting place, a place that's turning over. The history, once, going back to that parking lot, once we were in charge of it, it became a party place in the summertime. People would come out and drink and have a grand time, right in that decrepit parking lot. And then if they had to see a man about a horse, they would go down to the alcoves in our church. We're not, we're not sure how to, we want to get a handle on that. And interestingly, when I was doing the estimates on what it would cost to do the parking lot, one of the estimators said, "I'm with Hands of Hope Homeless. We help the homeless. Could we, do you think we could use your church to meet?" I said, "I think we could do that very well." So I went to the council, and now we have them there every Saturday from 9:00 to 12:00. They bring the homeless in, they feed them, they give them clothing, and whatever they want. So I guess the point I'm trying to make is, I think it'd be very good to revitalize that parking lot. I think as a church, if you went with our proposal, we could probably do it at less expense than the city could itself. The bid I put in here is, compares to at a high bid, it was $26,000, but I've looked into this firm, and I think that they'll do very well, and they've explained everything they're gonna do, which is a lot of work. So it's not just for the church. It's for economic development and renewal of that area of the city. We would be happy to work- We would be happy to work or collaborate with any other group that's working within that area so that we're all on the same page. We'd be happy to collaborate with the city engineers to make sure that all of this was being done right. And so I hope you will take a look at our proposal.
So the, the proposed, the requested amount, is that for just a portion of the parking, or that would take care of the entire parking lot?
That's just for that 4,800-square-foot portion of the parking lot, which is a horrible mess. It's got rocks coming out of it and beer bottles around, which we go clean up every now and then.
How many parking spaces would that provide?
We figure 30. The other thing we were thinking, you know, the church only needs the parking lot at night and on Sunday. So we were thinking we could, you know, make an arrangement with the school, the university, to use it as a parking, park for parking in the daytime, both that light, that lot, and our church lot, which probably has about, I don't know, 30 other parking places in it, so.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any questions from the proposal?
Not seeing any.
Thank you. And that is our first segment of Public Facilities and Improvements, which totals, 13 proposals totaling about $739,100. The next section is Public Services, which we have 12 proposals. The first of which is a street outreach project sponsored by Pittsburgh Department of Public Health in the amount of $70,000. Outreach activities will be conducted and contracted. Street outreach workers in coordination with partnering agencies, including referrals to medical, mental health, substance use treatment shelter. Outreach activities will include supplying necessary health, hygiene, and safety items as deemed appropriate by the outreach workers, and funds will cover one contracted worker and supplies needed. Good evening.
Good evening. Steve Curry, Director of Public Health for our great city. We are seeking to continue our street outreach program. I'm very proud of our street outreach, outreach workers. That's a multiple. Just some statistics in the last quarter, which I myself find impressive. 258 laxone kits were distributed to our homeless population. 29 folks went to detox as a result of these contacts. Six folks are now employed. Six have received housing in the last quarter. 21 have accepted medical care, five, mental health care. 24 folks have committed to our partner Restoration Recovery, who is in the room with us. And 37 folks have sought some sort of shelter to help get off the streets. We've also made way, again, with Restoration Recovery back in December, when we had, over the Christmas holiday, we had some very cold temperatures. We were able to get 31 individuals off the streets and housed at emergency shelter. And again, with huge assistance from the United Way as well as Restoration Recovery. So it's just something that we'd like to continue to support and keep our homeless population safe and moving in the right direction.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All important work. Is there, are there any questions? Anybody virtually?
No.
Okay. The next project is Pittsburgh Farmers Market, sponsored by Growing Places, in the amount of $8,495. Project funds will be used to support the Pittsburgh Farmers Market, which helps expand access to healthy food for Pittsburgh families, especially marginalized populations, including low-income residents. The Pittsburgh Farmers Market Manager, Assistant Market and Activity Coordinator, Community Nutrition Coordinator, weekly hands-on activities for the youth, and Translator will be paid through these funds.
And I believe this is Ann, again. There, Ann?
Yes, have I unmuted myself successfully?
Yes, you have.
Excellent. So the Pittsburgh Farmers Market has a long history in Pittsburgh and has been at many different locations. And we have tried different models throughout the years in order to increase the number of vendors, really create a vibrant place-based market, and also to make sure that we are supporting the entire community with a focus on those who are food insecure. I think as time has evolved with the Pittsburgh Farmers Market, you know, best practices have taken place around what makes sense for our farmers, what makes sense for vendors, and then who the clientele are that visit the Pittsburgh Farmers Market. The difference this year, building on what we've learned over previous years, is we really would like to hire youth leaders. I saw that in the consolidated plan, one of the focuses is around youth. Growing Places very successfully runs youth programs, whether it's helping to manage our farmers, our mobile markets, to helping pack CSAs, which are home-delivered to 200 people each week in the region. And I think if we had our youth more involved in the farmers market and really helping to conceptualize the activities and implement activities at the market to attract families, I think that would really help to build the farmers market. So that is what I am proposing this year. A lot of the funds will be used, actually, to support youth leaders and to help really increase vibrancy of the farmers market.
Thank you. Are there any questions regarding this proposal at this time?
Not seeing any.
All right. Thank you, Ann.
Thank you.
The next project, Spartacus Program, sponsored by Montezot Regional YMCA in the amount of $25,000. The program funds will be used to support staff salaries of the Teen Center. Spartacus Program is one of our signature Y initiatives of the Montezot Community Branch. And I'm going to let Representative--
Lisa, is that you again?
Speak about the program.
Yes, it is.
Hi.
Hello.
We can hear you.
Hi.
Yep.
Thank you. Yeah, so we're applying again for, to continue our current Spartacus teen program, and the funding will allow us to continue to serve the at-risk youth in our community, as well as afford us the resources to expand on the number that we serve. Spartacus offers our youth physical activities, academic tutoring, college preparation, community service, and life skills workshops. And as the effects of the COVID-19 pandemic still linger, this programming has been particularly important and sought out by the teens in our community as they look for ways to reconnect with others in a safe and fun environment. And we have been serving 50 youth typically on an annual basis, and we are up to at least 60 now. And overall, our teen center serves well over 100 and 150 youth a year. So we'd just like to continue to provide these services and look to expand them. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments on this application at this time? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next application is Drug Enforcement Patrol Program, sponsored by the Pittsburgh Police Department in the amount of $65,000. The program funds will be used to provide police overtime money to conduct drug-related investigations within the designated CDBG areas. Activities will include arrests, surveillance, execution of search warrants, drug seizures, weapon seizures, US currency seizures, and vehicle seizures. Additionally, funds will be used to conduct targeted proactive patrols within CDBG areas, primarily the downtown area and the rail trail district that falls within the CDBG area. Anybody here this evening? Virtually?
Not seeing anyone.
Okay. It's pretty self-explanatory. The project, next one, is Family Home Shelter, sponsored by North Star Family Services in the amount of $12,500. North Star provides the only safety net program for homeless families in our region, emergency shelter, meals, clothes, intensive case management, educational training, job and housing search, trauma-informed programming, financial literacy, coaching, and monitoring. The CDBG funds will be used to pay for staff salary costs.
And that would be John, I believe?
Yeah.
This is John Hoag from North Star Family Service. Thank you for having me this evening. We'd like to thank Pittsburgh CDBG for supporting us last year. And once again, this year, we're asking for support for staffing. Staffing is one of the hardest things to find funding for in our line of work. And there's so many reasons why staffing is critical, because that's how we are able to help families in the Pittsburgh area and in Leamster area. We, we have asked for $3,000 more this year, and there's several reasons why. Number one is inflation, and we don't have to talk about that because we're all living it. But one of the second reasons is the largest state grant that supports the North Star Shelter has decided to, to end. It's the ESG program for family services. The ESG, it's, you know, Emergency Solution Emergency Shelter Services funding is going to be funding only individuals now, not families. So that leaves a gaping hole for us in funding. And then a third reason why we feel like we have to ask for an extra $3,000 this year is our small staff team, which is three full-timers, we've pushed us, ourselves to the breaking point, to the point where we have to find, you know, to hire a fourth staff. One of the reasons for the growth is, and I've spoke about it for a few years now, we've been working on a supportive housing program. And I'm very happy to say, in the summer, this summer of 2023, we'll be breaking ground for 15 new apartments. This is brand-new housing stock that will be subsidized for families, and the families of Leamster and Pittsburgh will be prioritized in this new housing. So it's very exciting times for us. You know, being a small nonprofit, I think that we're pulling off some amazing things for the community and for the families in need. So that's what North Star has going on. I appreciate any consideration for this grant request, and hope you have all, have a good evening.
Thank you, John. And very important work.
Thank you.
Everyone's efforts are appreciated on this entire category.
Thank you.
I guess it does. Any questions or comments on this application? The next one is Youth Innovation Center, Youth Empowered Program, sponsored by Making Opportunities Count, in the amount of $50,000. Funds will be used to provide consultant support, training, and supplies to the Youth Innovation Center, a recently renovated center in the Clegon neighborhood of Pittsburgh, identified as a disadvantaged area struggling with high rates of poverty, low rates of educational attainment and earnings. The center would give youth access to quality programming and opportunity to expand the Empower Program for the youth and provide peer engagement, career mentorship, and violence prevention programming.
And Nicole, is that you?
That's me. I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thanks.
Great, thank you. So I'm Nicole Machad. I'm the VP of Advancement for Making Opportunity Count, and I'm here on behalf of our Youth Service Department, particularly our Youth Innovation Center. I think many in the room might be aware that MOC's been renovating the previous Clegon Neighborhood Center for quite a few years now. And I'm happy to say that we have received occupancy as of yesterday, so the doors officially can open very soon. We had staff in there today, so that was really exciting for us. So this grant would support us doing what we've talked about for these past few years is what's going to happen behind those doors. We've been talking a lot about how we can't wait to open those doors because of what we're going to do there. And so this will be supporting some of those programming opportunities that we've really been developing with the youth founders that have supported the design of the Youth Innovation It's also really great timing because we have received a DPH grant. We were notified a couple of weeks ago for community violence prevention programming that we will house in the Youth Innovation Center that will support some of this program that will complement what we're going to be doing in the innovation side. So that's exciting, and that helps us to staff that center, because as of then, we really were not able to have the funds to fully staff the center. So this will give us a weekend coordinator, it'll give us a weekday coordinator and a site manager who will be there. So lots of exciting stuff. For the purposes of this opportunity, we were really focusing on a program that we started called Youth Empowered, which we did this with about a small grant from the Community Foundation of North Central Mass that focused on helping youth to understand their role in race equity and social justice and become leaders. And so we want to expand upon that since we had a lot of good feedback from it, and we really want to start working on the innovation programming that we are developing in that space. So there were three components that we wanted to focus on here. One of them is focusing a lot on mentorship, peer mentorship, using those youth founders and the older youth that have been involved in the design of it, and really providing structure around their role now that the center is going to be open. There would be a lot of training involved in that, and we're focused on some Department of Mental Health resources in youth peer mentorship. And so that would support the training that is going to happen in that field. We also have a workforce mentorship component, which is really going to be comprised of local professionals that we hope will help nurture some of the talents and skills that youth are passionate about, and really just help them to explore youth-led projects. That's something that we want to do, is a lot of youth-led opportunity here and connecting them to the right resources and individuals. And in that, we were building a mentorship component of a mentors and residents where we could provide some sort of stipend or incentive for local professionals to stick with us for, rather than one-off opportunities, you know, for about a month or two, take this, this mentor and residence position and really help some of the youth grow in some of these fields. And then the final component is our digital arts and our arts programming, which is the core of what we decided that we were going to be doing in the Innovation Center. So if you came into the Innovation Center, you would see that we have a large maker space in the front of the building, and then in the back of the building, we have a multimedia room. Youth had said that they were interested in podcasting, learning vlogging, audio and video production. So there's a lot that we have in there around that, that the expertise is outside of what MOC actually does. So we want to be able to build out the resources. We have had ongoing conversations with FATV, with the Pittsburgh Art Museum. We know local artists that are interested, and, you know, some professionals in graphic design fields. And so this would be an opportunity for us to incorporate real programming into having, you know, some of these consultants be onsite for designated hours every week, multiple times a week, to really help bring the youth-led projects to another level.
Agreed.
Rather than a drop-in program, you know, they can really sustain some kind of project. So yeah, that is about it. We're very excited, and we are grateful for this opportunity and just are excited to open the doors and welcome everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And any questions regarding this application at this time? All right. Thank you very much, Nicole.
Thank you.
The next project is Mayor's Energy Fund, sponsored by the Mayor's Office in the amount of $25,000. Funds will be used to assist income-eligible residents with utility assistance. The Mayor's Energy Fund will be in an application process following the HUD income guidelines, which will provide funding to help those in need pay for their utilities so they will not be going out heat, without heat, during a cold winter months, and supplementing existing programs such as Making Opportunities Count and the YMCA to reduce the financial burden of qualified poverty-level families in the consortium. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Joan David. I'm Mayor Deanna Tally's Administrative Assistant, and the key word here is Pittsburgh Mayor's Energy Fund. This is for Pittsburgh residents. Mayor Deanna Tally has always wanted to create an energy fund, and when he was approached by the President of IC Credit in November with a donation for the mayor to use to help residents, he thought it was the opportune time to start this energy fund, particularly with the, the costs that we're all looking at now. It is another way, like it says, to supplement these other agencies, ease the financial burden. Maybe they can use the money for something else that's needed in the household. These funds will be paid directly to the utility companies. It is through an application process. It has to be income-qualified. It has to be income-qualified, using 2022 HUD guidelines. It'll be administered out of the mayor's office. So right now, the council is in the process of accepting the funds for us to spend down. And after the 17th, after the council meeting, we should be ready to go with accepting applications. And hopefully, I think, we think it fits into the guidelines of the Consortium five-year plan and the poverty, the strategy, the poverty strategy within the plan.
Okay.
Any questions?
Everybody keeps taking my line. It's okay.
Okay, thank you.
We like questions. All right. Thank you very much. The next application, Homelessness Prevention Project, sponsored by Community Legal Aid, in the amount of $20,000. Funds from the Fitchburg program will allow a CLA attorney to continue to assist tenants with eviction cases before their court dates and to represent subsidy program participants threatened with termination from the programs, work that we are unable to prioritize in the absence of dedicated funding. This project allows CLA to target specialized housing resources to Fitchburg residents in an effort to ensure that the city's most vulnerable individuals and families get the legal help they need to prevent homelessness. The ability to focus attention on Fitchburg allows CLA to identify systemic issues that affect many more tenants than just our clients. Is anybody here this evening?
Mr. Felper, are you there? I think you are unmuted.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Excellent, thank you. Hi, my name is Andrew Felper, and I'm the Senior Grants Manager with Community Legal Aid. We are again requesting funding for the Fitchburg Homelessness Prevention Project, which really allows us to focus on two vulnerable populations in the city. One, our tenants who are at risk of eviction, and two, participants in rental assistance programs like Section 8, who are at risk of being terminated from the subsidy. As you can imagine, the need remains very high, and we've requested the increase in funds because the need of the community continued to outpace the resources we currently have. As you can imagine, you know, I think everyone's kind of touched on it at one point or another, the reason for their funding, but it's the same for us, you know, inflation, stagnant wages, limited supply, you know, you can go right down the list of why the need is so high for members of the community. Also, a number of assistance programs for housing that originated from COVID have expired or are about to expire, so the need remains very high. It hasn't, our program has been successful and I think very effective, but the need continues to not abate. It remains very high at the moment. So we have requested an increase in funding, and with it, we can really dedicate the resources of attorneys and paralegals to help the low-income renters of the city. And we appreciate the support we've had for the last five years, and we really, it's a valuable partnership. We hope to continue it going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions regarding this application at this time? All right. The next activity is Access to Recovery, sponsored by Restoration Recovery, in the amount of $20,000. Restoration Recovery Center is a nonprofit community-based recovery center located in Fitchburg, guided by a mission to respond to people seeking recovery using a person-centered approach that promotes long-term recovery by providing holistic and faith-based alternatives. RRC is primarily a volunteer-run and peer-driven service model. Program funds will be used to pay salary, occupancy, utilities, office supplies, et cetera.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mark Armstrong. I'm the Executive Director of Restoration Recovery Center. And as you stated, we're seeking $20,000 through this grant proposal. Restoration Recovery Center was started in September of 2019 by my wife and I. We are located over at 40 Fairmount Street here in Fitchburg, over and next to the building that MOC is renovating for their youth. And our focus is on supplying recovery support services for individuals, no matter where they're at, whether they're still actively using, whether they're new into recovery or they've been in recovery for a while. We do that by offering different support groups, relapse prevention, parenting and life skills, recovery reflections, art therapy, smart recovery, music therapy. We focus on a multiple pathway approach. We do have a current staff of two harm reduction specialists, a case manager, and two recovery coaches. We supply recovery coach services for individuals whose insurance doesn't cover recovery coach services. We get a lot of referrals from Gamma, from CHC. If their insurance doesn't pay for a recovery coach, they send them to us. And the good thing about our program is we don't bill them for services. We are solely reliant on grants, donations, and fundraising. But that allows us to help people who get turned away from other organizations. We also partner with the City of Fitchburg's inter-agency street outreach program. We're one of the locations that they refer their people to. They drop them off during the day. Through our recovery coaches, we get them plugged into whether they need referrals to detox, whether they need help getting an ID, insurance, housing. We have programs, we get people connected with RAFT, RCAP. We also partner with the city and the COC. If they're chronically homeless or have a substance use order, we have a program coordinated that helps get people plugged in and apply for assistance so they can get their own place, whether it's in a SMOC shelter or one of the other. Sometimes they even get their own apartments. So yeah, we do a lot of different wraparound services. We have a lot of partnerships with the Age Project with us, Spanish-American Center, Fitchburg's inter-agency team. We have a partnership with Community Health Connections where we do referrals for people seeking medical assisted treatment. We refer them to their services here. Yeah, and so we're just, this grant would help us just continue those services.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
It's great how everybody works together. Any questions regarding this application? Yes, sir. Absolutely. Please just come to the podium and state your name for the record.
My name is David Nato, and I am a volunteer at Restoration Recovery Center, and I would like to speak in support of it. I myself am in recovery, and I have been for four years, and Restoration Recovery has been ideal in my recovery with the groups that they provide there, like-minded people. It is truly a huge resource for the City of Fitchburg. And I would also like to thank the Department of Public Health because they are also, the partnership is just wonderful, how we all act as a team and get the needs met of people that need recovery. So thank you very much.
Thank you. The next application is Transportation to Full Steam Ahead After-School Program, sponsored by Boys and Girls Club of Fitchburg and Leamester, in the amount of $70,199. Program funds will be used to provide one-way transportation from Fitchburg schools to the Boys and Girls Club After-School Program located at 365 Lindell Street in Leamester. Approximately 105 youth will be served.
And Ms. Koveney, you there or you are unmuted?
I am, yes. Hello, everybody. This is Elizabeth Koveney. I lead the charge over here at the Boys and Girls Club in Fitchburg and Leamester. So thank you so much for having me tonight. I appreciate it. I'm a one-year in, so last year at this time, I was requesting funding was, I think, a few days in. So you were all, you all provided me so much grace and kindness, so thank you for that. Here we are a year later with an intensely increased cost in various segments of our business and of our club. And we are continuing to get back to pre-pandemic levels, so we're very excited about that. And we're continuously trying to figure out how to get more kids here and to get more kids home. So transportation remains one of our, one of our biggest challenges. So with the support of the City of Fitchburg, we would be very grateful for any financial contributions to what we have used as busing fees. So we don't charge any of the kids. We do pay out of pocket for all of the transportation to the club, and then it's a parent pickup thereafter. But we are trying to work with our public transportation system for take-home programs for our teenagers and really solve for some of the transportation barriers. But your contribution would be certainly most helpful to our cause. So thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments regarding this application?
Not seeing any, Paula.
Okay. Thank you, Mike. The next application is Integrated Community Resources for Veterans, sponsored by Clear Path for Veterans New England, Inc., in the amount of $20,000. Clear Path is requesting funding to support ours for a resource coordinator to focus on outreach services to Fitchburg veterans.
Good evening, Fitchburg. My name is Jeremiah Jones. I am the Outreach Coordinator for Clear Path for Veterans New England. And a special thank you to Michelle Marino, who works very closely with us to take care of your veterans. Just like to point out a couple of things, that the Massachusetts Department of Veterans Affairs has identified Fitchburg as a little-to-no outreach city for veterans, for our elderly. And I would say that just a couple of months ago, we started reaching Fitchburg veterans by just hosting a breakfast, just so we could get a place where we could sit with the veterans of Fitchburg and understand what their needs are and their homelessness and their food insecurities. And it was astounding, I sat with 22 veterans a couple of months ago. So Michelle and I are forging on, and Clear Path is going to, in the senior center, also called the Armory, I'm guessing it's going to turn into a veterans' center on the second floor. We're going to continue to do this monthly, and we're going to continue to do it until we have served all the veterans in Fitchburg, because we believe in that. I'm a recently retired veteran, and I continue to serve by serving my brothers and my sisters. So I really hope that you consider this grant. We're very serious about it. We're located right at Devon's, and we're not going to stop visiting your city. So thank you if there's any questions. I'm sorry, I took your line.
That's okay. Are there any questions regarding this application? Thank you very much. Thank you for your service. The next application is Fund, I mean, sorry, Food Support for Fitchburg Residents, sponsored by Ginny's Helping Hand, Inc., in the amount of $40,000. CDBG funding will be restricted to the food costs supporting Fitchburg residents, seeking to provide nutritious food to clients each month, improve the health and well-being of families in Fitchburg, and increasing options for healthier food, providing better access to produce, meats, and seafood.
And hello again, Brandon. Hi, you are unmuted.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Perfect. Good evening, everybody. My name is Brandon Robbins. I'm the Executive Director of Ginny's Helping Hand. Thank you all for the opportunity to speak before you tonight in support of this application. For those of you who are not familiar with Ginny's, we're located at 52 Mechanic Street in Leamester. We're a nonprofit with a pretty simple mission of fighting hunger in north central Massachusetts. The way we do this is we run a food pantry program. Clients come in and visit us twice a month usually, and everybody receives pretty much the same thing. One of the first things they receive is a dried food bag. This contains all of the things you would expect to kind of get from a food pantry, pasta, vegetables, rice, all of that kind of stuff. Thanks to partnerships that we've created with the Worcester County Food Bank, local Hannafords, Target, and BJ's, we're also able to offer meats, cheeses, eggs, and milk, produce, bread and pastries, and all of that kind of stuff. As we know, you know, I was just watching a story on the news about the cost of eggs. It's really critical. Since the start of, the level of service that we've been providing has really been through the roof. In 2021, we served 13,032 clients. In 2022, we served 23,633 clients. That's an 81% increase. And looking at those numbers a little bit more and well, tonight, 8,128 of those 23,000 clients come from the City of Fitchburg. That's 34% of the clients that we serve. So we're hoping to receive some support and so that we can continue to serve the Fitchburg clients that we serve currently and to increase upon that so that nobody in our region goes hungry. So again, thank you for your time tonight and your concern.
Thank you. Are there any questions regarding this application?
Not seeing any, Paula.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. That's the end of that category. There's 12 proposals in the amount of $426,194, and that's in our public services category. The next category is economic development, for which there are five proposals. The first one being Small Business Technical Assistance Program, sponsored by New View Communities, in the amount of $25,000.
Thanks for having us here tonight. Mark Doan from New View Communities. This is a longstanding program. We're requesting again about $25,000 to assist business, small businesses throughout Fitchburg. We help about 40 businesses a year. One of the couple trends that we've been seeing in the past couple of years is many more minority businesses. So about a third of our businesses in Fitchburg that we're assisting under this program are owned by people of color. And we're also seeing more and more businesses connected with the change in Main Street to the creative economy as well. Each year, we help those businesses also either obtain loans and grants. I think this year, our goal is to have about $100,000 in either loans or grants for those businesses. So we appreciate the support. It's been a great partnership with the city, with the Chamber, and other lenders, and also with Fitchburg State University, where we're located in the ID Lab. I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Not at this time. Thank you. Oh, absolutely.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Joe Ferguson, Director of In-Town Fitchburg, formerly known as Reimagine North of Maine. I just want to support the last applicant's proposal. Without that application, we couldn't do a lot of our stuff downtown, too, in the partnership. So like Mr. Dohan said, with business assistance, micro enterprise, particularly minority business-owned, what we're seeing downtown, very much a partnership, not only with In-Town and Reimagine, but also the Chamber. We work together very closely about not only downtown businesses, but citywide as well, as we're trying to create our welcoming, revitalized downtown. This is a key part of that partnership. Through technical assistance, helping businesses get financial capital to open or expand is a really powerful tool in that program. Thank you.
Thank you. And we have, are there any questions regarding that application? All right. The next application is Main Street Studios, sponsored by Fitchburg Cultural Alliance, in the amount of $60,000. Main Street Studios provides a coworker space and community arts center on Main Street in Fitchburg. It offers affordable studio rentals and community space utilized for meetings, rehearsals, educational, professional development workshops, as well as community events. Main Street Studios is developing a gallery and rental space where artists can display and sell work. This funding will support the staff to manage the facility, retail, and create programs.
Hello, I'm Jessie Olson, the Executive Director of the Fitchburg Cultural Alliance, and thank you for having us speak tonight and for considering our application. In 2019, the Fitchburg Cultural Council did a public input meeting, and what was identified by local creatives is they wanted affordable studio space and a community arts center and a group of art stewards through New View Communities. The Fitchburg Cultural Alliance worked together and got some funding from mass development. And then with the TDI Fellow and Fitchburg State University, over three years, we're able to identify the space that used to be the Fidelity Bank Building. And in July of '22, we opened Main Street Studios across the street. And housed in a former bank, it is where creativity, community, and commerce join forces. We now have five artist studios that are currently providing workspace for seven working artists. Our residents include visual artists, a music teacher, other teachers, and community leaders. Additionally, we are offering meeting, workshop, and event space where creatives can meet with one another, clients, or colleagues in a professional setting. Our growing list of workshops not only provide teaching artists an opportunity to host a class and build their audience, but also offer professional development opportunities for anyone in the region who want to monetize their art or their practice. And in addition to teaching about the arts themselves, workshops instruct about finance, marketing, and how to build the business. And we also continue to collaborate with all our community partners to create more programs, as well as draw people downtown. And we look forward to being a space where people will go to a restaurant and come shop and go to a gallery and be a place to be on Main Street. In the next year, we want to grow our retail space and provide more opportunities for artists to sell their art and develop their business. And we really do want to be a space where creatives in Fitchburg and throughout the region know they can come and buy art, learn about the business of art, and build a network of support. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Any questions regarding this application? Not at this time. The next application is Sign and Facade Program, sponsored by Community Development, in the amount of $60,000.
My name is Elizabeth Murphy, Liz Murphy, Executive Director of Community Development. The, we're asking for another $60,000 in Sign and Facade funds, so that we can offer up to six signs for new or existing businesses throughout the city of Fitchburg. We, in the last year, which is our current year that we're operating in, have $60,000 for sign, sign funding for up to six businesses in the, strictly in the downtown area. And right now, we have four businesses that we're working with to create new signs, and we anticipate that that funding will be exhausted by the end of this fiscal year. And so we're looking to replenish that, because the need seems to be there, and we'd like to go beyond just Main Street and expand to, throughout the city, so that other parts of the city can also benefit from this sign program, which provides up to $10,000, or 70% of the cost of the sign and the design costs, so that a business can get a nice sign in, in their store, or in front of their store.
All right. Now the Main Street's two-way, you need two-sided signs.
That's exactly it, yes.
Any questions or comments on this application? All right. The next application is Fitchburg Downtown Coordinator, sponsored by Fitchburg State University, in the amount of $35,000. And I imagine Joe's walking up to the podium.
Thank you. Joe Ferguson, Director, In-Town Fitchburg. Before I get to my proposal, I wanted to consolidate my trips up here, but I also want to voice my support for the Sign and Facade and Main Street Studios. First off, congratulations for Jessie, coming this far and getting the studios open, that's a big deal. And the Sign and Facade, you'll hear, complements some of the other work that we're doing downtown as well.
I could see you back there cheering.
I'm sorry?
I could see you back there cheering.
Good. Thank you. So, we started working on this specific CDBG project a couple of years ago, and the application we submitted this year, really the only thing that has changed is our branding. Our name has, we've sunsetted the Reimagine North of Maine partnership, and our branding is now in-town, with our partners, with our, with help from our partners at the state level, Mass Development. So just a clarification there. I am coming to request level funding on level with fiscal year '22. Our funding was reduced, as others were reduced last year, so I just want to make sure I'm, I'm not requesting more money this year, I'm requesting level funding. Matching funds are in place. This supports 50% of one person's salary, and that is the Downtown Coordinator, who complements some other economic development activities that we've heard about tonight, particularly in marketing and promoting small businesses downtown, but also citywide. But also focused on marketing and promoting our downtown businesses in aggregate, in the downtown commercial core. So just to separate the two, it's not so much business planning, and financial projections, and connecting folks to capital, it's more, how do you sell your business? How do you improve your logo? How do you improve your brand? How do you get online with social media presence? And then also coordinating with those small businesses and micro enterprise, this is to do pop-ups, to be able to pop up at a festival, or an in-town event, or at Mill Street. So it's tying, it's tying the marketing promotion of the businesses also with our events, as well. Again, matching funds are in place. This is also supported by the university, that pays, that covers half of the cost of that position, and we're requesting on-level funding from last year. Any questions?
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Any, all right, anybody on virtual? You're all good?
No, I see Mary Jo. I don't know if she, our Economic Development Coordinator had anything to add? I don't think you're muted. Ah, there we go. Okay, I think, you're unmuted, Mary Jo.
Okay, okay, thank you. I just wanted to echo what Joe Ferguson had said, the importance of the Downtown Coordinator position. It is critical to have someone who's on the ground on a daily basis, keeping pulse with those businesses that exist, and, and as our downtown small business community grows, the events that will support those businesses and bring in more customers to those businesses, I think that role is going to be critical. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Any further comments from anyone? Okay. The next proposal in this category is Fitchburg Public Market, sponsored by Worcester Regional Food Hub, in the amount of $50,000. The Food Hub desires to bring satellite, a satellite of the successful Worcester incubator model to Fitchburg. We intend to disrupt the current state of population health and institutional inequities by not only addressing workforce and economic development, but also food insecurity and access to healthy foods. This will be by means of launching a public market, which will highlight local food entrepreneurs who will sell their products wholesale and on-site, coupled with associated retail and eatery place.
And I think there's a very patient Mr. Rainford, who is here for that.
Good evening. My name is Sean Rainford, I'm Director of the Worcester Regional Food Hub and the Fitchburg Public Market. We're seeking to open a shared-use kitchen and food retail site in downtown Fitchburg. We have a proven model of helping people start food businesses, and these food businesses are largely from lower-income and immigrant populations. Somebody has a favorite recipe from back home, or their grandma's recipe, we can take it from that idea all the way to them owning a brick-and-mortar restaurant, or having their products on grocery store shelves. We have launched Vietnamese restaurants, Jamaican, Mexican, Thai, we have donut restaurants, bakeries, Puerto Rican, Indian, chocolate companies, pasta companies, all that have launched from our incubator services to having their own locations. We do lots of trainings and technical assistance, so somebody has that idea, we kind of bring people out of the shadows, if they're selling out of their homes, and make them legal through food safety certifications, making sure they have the proper packaging and labels, all the appropriate permits that are required. We work, as I mentioned, largely with lower-income and immigrant populations. We run some workshops that we call Launching Diverse Food Entrepreneurs, and that, we've done three different times with 24 people in each cohort. We'd be looking to do that in Fitchburg as well, with our first cohort, working in collaboration with Lisa, Luisa Fernandez of Fitchburg Public Schools, and really collaborating with a number of different organizations that have been represented this evening. Fitchburg Public Schools, Fitchburg State, In-Town Fitchburg, we'd work with the FRA, the city's Economic Development Department, New View Communities, the North Central Chamber of Commerce. So this is really an economic development driver, and the goal is to get people out of the shadows, and eventually start to fill in a lot of the empty storefronts on Main Street with thriving diverse eateries.
Thank you. Have you secured a location?
We have a location that we hope to secure with this funding.
Okay.
And that location that we're looking at is 35 Main Street.
Okay. Are there any questions on this application?
Yep, sorry, I lost track. A couple of folks have hands. Mary Jo and Ann, both of you, I think you're both unmuted. So whoever wants to go first, Mary Jo?
How about if Ann goes first? Because I've already had a chance to talk, I didn't want to be monopolizing things.
Oh, no, Mary Jo, that's, that's fine, I'm happy to, just not to make it awkward now, so, a quick question around a lot of the Worcester Regional Food Hub's application, and I believe goals, align closely with the Fitchburg Farmers Market, you know, which has been running in kind of a staple of Fitchburg, you know, as long as I've been working in Fitchburg, which has been more than 15 years. So I'm just wondering how Sean and the Worcester Food Hub see the synergy between the Farmers Market and the Fitchburg Public Market, given the overlap, and also looking to see that you serve food insecure populations, just to expand on what that model looks like, so I can understand then how we could work together. Thank you.
Sure. So everyone knows Growing Places and the Food Hub have worked together for many, many years, and I view the Fitchburg Public Market as being complementary to the Farmers Market, and not a competitor, whereas the Farmers Market is, you know, kind of a pop-up produce, kind of grocery market more than anything. What we're looking to do here is that economic development driver for food businesses, not, not necessarily the, while we do directly support farmers, this venture is looking to support those food entrepreneurs that are looking to start their own food businesses and open restaurants, and have items on grocery store shelves. So I think it's, it can be complementary, and we can look, certainly look at ways to, to work together, but I don't view it as being a competitive effort.
Okay. Thank you, that was helpful explanation. Mary Jo, do you have a question?
I actually had a comment. In addition to the description that Sean has provided, one thing he, he didn't mention, but we've certainly been paying a lot of attention to it, while we've kind of searched and hoped that an experienced operator could help us spawn the kind of facility that this will be, because our food ecosystem for small entrepreneurial, micro enterprise food businesses really needs a spot where prepared foods can be made, whether it's completed entree items, sauces, baked goods, all that sort of thing. And, and that's really what Worcester, the Worcester Food Hub specializes in, based on what they've already proven as a successful model in Worcester. So it really is wonderful opportunity for him and his organization to spawn a satellite of sorts, by helping us to launch a shared kitchen facility, where people can create these prepared items in a legal commercial kitchen, not in their home kitchens, but in a kitchen that's proper, and, and then those items could be vended, and possibly even spawn brick-and-mortar businesses for some of those entrepreneurs. I think many of you are familiar with that 35 Main Street building. It got its outside renovated, but the inside, you know, we kept waiting for, how are we going to have it operated, and this is a great way for that to come to fruition.
Thank you. Anybody else would like to comment on the application?
Ann, was that your hand up from before, or?
Yes, I'm just not that technologically savvy.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes that category of our five proposals for economic development for $230,000. The next category is Rehabilitation and Preservation. First project is Critical Home Repair, sponsored by Habitat for Humanity, in the amount of $20,000. Critical home repair is exterior or interior work to alleviate critical health, life, and safety issues, or code violations for homeowners in need. Participants must own their own, own their own home, and have a verifiable need that falls within the scope and capabilities.
And Mr. Catman, if you're here for this, you are unmuted.
Yes, thank you for having me. Do you hear me?
A little bit louder, please.
Okay, right now, is that okay?
Getting there.
Okay.
Good, oh, good.
It's a little echo.
Hello?
Hello?
I just, I just wanted you to know that my wife and myself are volunteer family advocates for the Critical Home Repair Program for Habitat Humanity. We've been doing this now for several years, and we've been working with the CDGB grants from Fitchburg for the last four years, so this is our fifth year. We provide services such as wheelchair ramps, accessibility roofs, deck repair, whatever, whatever it takes to get a client that will remain in their own home, so they don't have to leave their home. We, right now, we've helped 13 families in Fitchburg to stay in their homes, and our goal for this year is four to six families in critical home repairs. We use volunteers wherever we can, and we basically have them supervised by professional construction managers. So we recently completed a critical home repair on Water Street in Fitchburg, and also Cedar Street and Highland Street. So we're looking forward to this year, and we really appreciate the support of the Fitchburg community. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Is there any comments or questions regarding this application?
Not seeing any.
Okay. We have the next application of Code Enforcement, sponsored by the Board of Health, in the amount of $108,139. Good evening, Mr. Curry.
Good evening again, folks. In my 15 years, I don't think I've ever made it before eight o'clock, so very impressive.
So don't blow it, Steve.
Thank you for the past 15 years of funding, and we would like to continue our services. Very briefly, the CDBG Code Inspector now will be mostly responsible for those, that new ordinance that our city council recently passed regarding vacant buildings. So those vacant properties downtown, falling in the target area, will be addressed, not only residentially, but now somewhat commercially. So that should help with the downtown restoration projects that are before you tonight. And again, I thank you for the funding, and we'd like to continue the program in our target areas as well, providing about 150 to 200 inspections, just the Code Inspector alone, on units, multifamily units, mostly multifamily units, as well as about 600 to 700 dwellings in the target area, providing code enforcement for those conditions that create blight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for your services.
Thank you.
And those two proposals for that category total $128,139. The next category is Demolition Clearance. The project, Demolition, sponsored by Community Development, in the amount of $175,000.
Yes, so last year, we took a year off from requesting demolition funds, but now we're back, because as we know, we still have more than our fair share of blighted buildings that are vacant, that are no longer useful, that may be unsafe. Right now, the city is working through the Problem Property Task Force, which has multiple department heads that are involved in code enforcement and problem property, property activities. So we're working together to develop the shortlist of potential properties that we would look to, that, that may in the future be demolished through this fund. There's certainly a process to go through to get to the final stages of which properties will be demolished, and of course, if they're privately owned, those property owners will be asked to make, to remedy the issues, so that the properties don't get demolished. But we'll have, we have more than our fair share of properties that are eligible for this demolition. So we expect that we would be demolishing three to maybe four properties with $175,000. It doesn't go as far as it used to. Most of the properties, we end up doing asbestos abatement, and abatement for other hazards, too, which can- too, which can drive up the cost of the actual demolition. And we anticipate that we'll be ready to, we'll have that list narrowed down to what it might actually be by the time the funding is available in July.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
That one proposal for that category is for $175,000. The last category is Planning and Administration, CDBG Administration, sponsored by Community Development in the amount of $210,000.
Yes. And this funding would be used to run the CDBG program, including activities like what we're doing right here tonight. It funds approximately two and a half FTEs, full-time equivalent. So it supports the administration of the program, as well as it allows us to apply for other grant funding to match and leverage the CDBG funding that we have and further the work that we do through the CDBG program.
All right. Thank you. Some of these, and that proposal caps that aspect. Some of these categories do have caps, as Liz mentioned at the beginning of the hearings. And there'll be more on January 24th for recommendations at the next Planning Board meeting. And if there's nothing further this evening, we'll look at closing the hearing, and I thank you for all attending tonight's meeting. Now saying, meaning adjourned.